Recording in progress. Good evening and welcome to the March 28, 2023.
Oh, my God, I gotta look this up.
Work session of the McMinnville City Council. I'd like to call the work session to order and call on our library director, Jenny Berg, to introduce the topic.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council President and councilors. I am going to be talking to you tonight about the Nelson House, which is the property 417 Adams Street used to be the Chamber House. And I'll bring up a PowerPoint, pretty simple PowerPoint, I think. Okay, cool.
Is that our new library?
With an addition, we're gonna do a skybridge. We already have a couple of skybridges at the library, and we're gonna just do a couple more over there. So, okay, so, the, as I said, it's the house on 417 Adams. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. We met as, so, a couple of us met, Susan Muir, Heather Richards, myself, and Jennifer Cuellar met to brainstorm different possible options for the Nelson House. And this is just a discussion of what we brainstormed and the pros and cons of those different options. And what we're looking for from you is what is, what resonates with you and what would you like us to look into further? So, we're looking at the options of sell the building and land in the private market, lease the building and land in the private market, lease the house for needed housing with a nonprofit, relocate the historic house to another property, amend the urban renewal to include this property, smaller programs at City Hall move to this property, or create a nonprofit resource center. So, things that you will want to consider when you're, when you're thinking about this, that the property is contiguous with City Park, the Aquatic Center, and the Public Library. As you all know, it's currently vacant. There's a leaning towards retaining ownership of land for future use because of that contiguous property. There's a leaning towards not demolishing a significant historic landmark. The facility assessment that was done in 2018 identified needed maintenance of the building, and that maintenance investment will depend on the future use of the structure. Leaving the structure vacant for a significant period of time is not good, is not desired, of course. The parking lot that is adjacent to the structure is critical to the operations of the Aquatic Center and City Park. Those parking spaces are needed for those different facilities. And of course, all of the options require some level of administrative attention to carry out. So, I'm not going to read each one of these slides to you. I'm just going to give a very high-level, I'm not even gonna go through the pros and cons, but just kinda high-level about these different options. So, option one, sell the building and land on the private market and on the, on the open market or soliciting proposals for purchase. The city could include requirements for the project to assure that the historic character of the building is retained and other city and community objectives are achieved. And as you can see, there's various pros and cons to this option. Because I don't do this very often, I'm, I'm, is it okay for a back and forth? Does anybody have any questions on this particular option, pros and cons, or you do wanna wait till the end?
Well, it just seems like if you wanna keep the land, that's not an option, really.
Good point.
Kind of like, why are we talking about it?
Okay, moving on then.
I know this is just conversational, but just to put a dollar value on that, is, was there any, like, CMA down to know what that is actually worth?
No, no, and that's, I mean, so that, those types of things, this is really just like, hey, here's some ideas, what do you want us to pursue further? What do you, do you want us to find out that information? Do you wanna, you know, obviously, if you were saying, it, Councilor Menke's saying, well, if you wanna keep the land, then don't, you know, we wouldn't pursue this, but if you're saying, I'm interested, then that's something that we would pursue, finding out that information.
Yeah, and just to add to that, so when we were doing this review, a similar property and similar-sized home, if you recall, the Dravdil House, just down the road, had sold, and that had sold for about $650,000 to $700,000.
Was it on Adams or Baker?
What's that? It was, it was on Baker Street, so this, that's the property that eventually became a short-term rental and re-zoned and went, went through a process here.
And where you, when you were looking at that comps, was that like, three months ago, six, six months ago, a year ago?
I can't recall exactly, and I can't recall exactly the value of it, or it had also been improved as well, but it was, it's just to give you some sort of framework.
Could you tell us what the value of the lot is without the house?
No, not right now. So, again, we haven't done any of those comparables in terms of a piece of property on Adams or Baker of this size, just that that, a similar-sized property with a similar structure on it, the structure had been improved, went on the market and sold. I think it sold for more than what I described, too. I'm sorry for that.
And what, go ahead.
When I went through this, it seemed like none of the options, or none, not on the option block, was doing anything with the parking lot, that the intent was to keep that no matter what. Am I reading this correctly?
Yes, so the park, the parking lot is a separate lot altogether. It's not part of this lot, even though a lot of people see it as a part of this lot, so there's two lots there. And the, as Jenny described, the parking, in the parking lot, is critical for the operations of the Aquatic Center and the City Park.
So, if the house went bye-bye and the lot was still there, we kept the lot, which was one of the options somewhere along there, you'd have basically two lots worth of parking, which would be even better for the Aquatic Center or the new library.
Can you give us some specs on the house and the lot itself?
And roughly, if you have any idea what it'd cost to move it, say, somewhere in town?
I will say that one of the comments, or one of the, the pieces of information in the report was that two other houses, similar houses were, there was an attempt to move them, and it didn't work out.
Yeah.
Due to various challenges.
Yeah, well, it's, it's two stories, probably the roof part would have to be cut off or move it, so I don't know.
No, so we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves in the options, but just to finish that conversation, the reason why the two others, you can move a two-story structure, and you can work through the issues of, of working with utility providers to move that. The two other, the Historic Landmarks Committee, in two other scenarios, had someone come forward who had requested to demolish a historic home, and in that process of discussion, one of the conditions of approval was, put it on the market for the amount that it would cost to demolish it, 'cause it costs money to demolish a structure, especially a historic structure, and see if you can get it relocated. So, it went on the market with money, so if you want this, we'll give you this much money to move it. And the reason it didn't work is because they could not find a lot to move it to that was within a reasonable distance.
Should we go through the options?
Yes, okay, so, option two, lease the building and land in the private market, and lots of the, lots of similar pros and cons, but of course, we then retain ownership of the, the land and the building. And one of the benefit fits would be that the maintenance would be the responsibility of the tenant, or there would maybe be an annual maintenance fee. Building on this, a similar option, option three, lease the house for needed housing with a nonprofit, and partner with a local nonprofit to leverage the house for needed housing. Option four, relocate the historic house to another property that we were just getting into, so sell the house with the requirement that it be moved. Option five, amend the urban renewal to include this property, the plan to add this property into the district, this could bring a funding source for private development of the property.
I thought that actually was a good idea, whether, no matter what we do with it, if it, as long as we're not selling it, per se.
Option six would be to move smaller programs at City Hall to the building.
That would be the easiest.
And option seven, create a nonprofit resource center. Oh, same slide there. So, you've got your pros and cons, you've got your various options, you obviously have questions, and again, these are, you know, I told Heather that, that she would probably have to field most of the questions, so thank you already for that, Heather. And we will entertain those questions, and our hope is that we come out of this with some feedback from you as to what to pursue, and hopefully, it's not a pursue all seven of them to great detail. But hey, if that's what needs to happen.
I have a question. Is that okay, ma'am?
Yeah, counselor, please.
Thank you. Got so excited about doing this. If we, I'm assuming that the city does have in mind some possible places or people they could place over there that it would work within that facility. I mean, as I think about it right now, you'd probably need to put some appliances in the kitchen, maybe, or something like that, for coffee and et cetera, but I don't know how much other repair it would take, but it seems to me like that really seems like the easiest option with it. I guess the question is, how soon, or is this even, this lot being contemplated for the new library that might happen within three to five years, presumably, hopefully soon?
The recommendation from MAC PAC was to put the library where the Aquatic Center is.
Right.
Whether or not that is what eventually gets pursued in terms of rightsizing that project is, is yet to be seen. It was not, I don't think it works with the, the size of the lot and the way the streets are located to have the library in this location.
Well, yeah, I didn't expect it to be in that location. I just thought, how much, I mean, you wanna keep that land, so there's obviously something in mind that you wanna control this particular piece, and I guess parking is probably the biggest issue.
Parking and, and really more, you know, part of the keeping it and leasing it, that is, because we're, we're not sure, but it would be, because it's that contiguous piece of property, let's keep it for future planning when we do have that option to.
So, I guess leasing is not, is a possibility, too.
Yeah, so if you look at page four of your meeting packet, that has the map, so the site map, and what's unique about where this property sits is the city owns all the frontage on Adams Street there, from Second Street up to Fifth. So, that's, that's a contiguous, public-owned property up and down that frontage on Adams. And so, regardless of what we all four thought was, rather than surplusing this property that's in the middle of all of that, it made sense to retain that public, public land for something moving forward, and what is that something? But at least keeping it there as intentionally, and then figuring out how, how to use it in the interim, or maybe we retain ownership and lease it to another use, but.
No, I'm totally on your page with the land. I think you should keep it in the.
Yet, to me, option one is not an option. I don't think this is a time or a place to be doing, to be relieving ourself of assets, especially ones that are strategically positioned. I also am not keen on jumping into the option seven there, which is derived from not, not, not saying that that wouldn't be a, a great city program, but it would be a new city program, and I feel like we're spending so much energy to try to make sure that we're providing for the city programs we do run, that bringing a new, a new program online isn't of interest to me.
Yeah, I agree, just note point.
Counselor Gary?
Thanks for the options and, and good tee-up of the discussion. I guess any decision we make, my preference would be, I'm, I'm loathe to invest in the building at the moment. I don't think, the work needed to get it to be any of the leaseability, or even putting our own employees in there. We have a laundry list of other things that I think, I think are higher on the list, and so, again, I'd be loathe to, to invest in this structure much, and would rather just continue to hold it in the land bank and, and, and use it as public parking for the moment, is, is where I'm at.
Madam President, or Madam Mayor?
Yes. Counselor.
Well, the only problem is, if you leave a building empty, it's just kind of like a place to focus bad behavior, so to speak. I, I mean, that's true as in when you're renting out buildings of any kind, so you don't wanna leave it empty, so something does need to be done with the building. And I don't know, what would it take to make it usable as an office at this point?
Oh, well, we did provide you with some, what the assessment recommended in terms of the need for immediate investment, that was $121,000, based on the site needs around there, most, most of that is site needs. And then, there's also system replacement, so the systems in the homes are in this, are in, in a tenure of replacement over this next 10 years. I will say that when the assessment was done, this was one of the structures which actually came back with the, one of the high, one of our structures that we own, that came back with the higher score of being in poor condition, and with no investment over the next 10 years, it actually went into the, one of the worst scores for condition, meaning that it does, for it to move forward, it does need some investment in it over time, over the next many years, for it to be a viable structure in the future.
Counsel President?
Can I just add on to that? So, the, the primary near-term improvements, as I recall, were roof and chimney work, and then the access needs work as well.
Yeah, and the plumbing, so page.
Plumbing, right, that was.
Page six of your staff report has a paragraph that talks about what the assessment said needed to be done.
Counsel President?
Yeah, Heather, thank you for the report, and other staff that worked on it. Option one, although it's not a desire of mine personally, I think having a CMA on that property to understand the value of what we're talking about would just be a good number to have when this comes back to council for a decision. Same with option two, knowing what it could fetch on a, on a rental market from a lease perspective. Number three is, I'm agnostic, too, not, not my favorite, I mean, my, my favorite in all these options is seeing what we could do with it from a city perspective, but I would like to look at that through the lens of, what are we losing out on by not capturing tax revenue from it? What are we losing out on by not capturing lease revenue on it in that perspective? And so, if we took that same dollar amount, are we, could we be placing that, the staff that we could put in that building in a, in a different environment and be more efficient with that staff than, than what they are right now, or moving into that building? And so, knowing those numbers would help me get there, but I definitely think City Hall is crowded, and so, also, when we come back with those numbers, kinda having a recommendation on what would be moving over there and what efficiencies are lost or gained from a City Hall perspective of moving those staff or departments over there. That's kinda where I'm at on it, but I'm with the mayor on number seven, that I don't think creating a new program in the city at this time is anything I'd be interested in. Number five, with us retaining it, I don't know what really the, the benefit of that would be. That's the urban renewal piece.
Well, they would have maybe some dollars there if we chose to do it. Could we benefit from the dollars from the urban renewal?
It's very difficult to justify vesting urban renewal dollars into a public facility at this point in time. Where, where there could be value, the team was thinking, where there could be value in terms of the city owning the property and investing our renewal dollars, it would be investing urban renewal dollars to put it into a private use, so a lease use or something like that. So, for instance, if the, if the lift to get it into private lease use is $121,000 and on the market, the private market's not gonna support that, then there might be an opportunity to use urban renewal dollars for that, because that will generate property tax revenue based on the tenant. But it's very, it's very difficult to gain concurrence from overlapping taxing districts of, of investing urban renewal dollars in public structures.
What is the, I'd be interested in knowing the cost of maintaining the property currently, and also, who that lands on, or whose budget that lands on?
We, we can do that. The short answer is it's a general fund obligation.
And then, you know, relocating the house, I, I don't really see option one being viable, so I don't see option four being anything that needs to be explored. I think, as a body, we just have to really see where we, where we wanna land on the historic value of this building and other buildings that are in the city land bank, and, and I think that really drives this discussion at the end of the day, of the costs associated with investing in this to not just maintain status quo with the property, but bring it up to usable spec that could be used long-term for city staff.
Adam, wait.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
Thanks. I think I kind of agree with Adam that using it for housing is maybe not the best use, but I wanna explore that a little bit. Are there options to partner with another entity to do redevelopment of the property and then have it in housing perhaps for some period of time, but the city retains ownership?
That's kinda number three, I believe.
Yeah. Well, there, so, yes, there are. So, our, our nonprofit housing partners, when we were going through this process, had at one point in time expressed an interest in pursuing whether it made sense for them. They, they can leverage dollars to maintain the property and invest in it to bring it into housing, and then it, then how long it needs to be deed restricted for that, we don't know, we didn't explore that any further. But at one point in time, there was interest in that. Where, where it might be difficult is, this is, it's, it's only 1,700 square feet as a property, so it's four bedrooms upstairs, but the need now for the, for the investment may override how much it's gonna yield in terms of housing, I don't know, but we could explore that with housing partners and see if they're interested.
I, I mean, if others are interested in it, because that would address the redevelopment cost for the city, it solves a problem for the city. The problem's not ideal, but there's other housing in that area. I think it's something we should consider, at least.
In that option three slide, Heather, you, and Jenny, you call out the additional requirements and complicated environmental review for a historic structure versus a non-historic structure. Is that moving that needle from 120,000 to 300,000, or?
No, so that, that is a, so when you, it's a, we call it a Section 106 review, if there's, if there's federal funds or state funds involved, and it goes through a process of how will the use impact the historic integrity, but it's part of it. I mean, that's, that's, that will be a, a step in the process.
Okay.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess from my perspective, I think option one is out. I, I don't think we wanna get rid of the land. Options two and three, the parking, in that parking lot is very needed for the pool, so I, I feel like if we use that for leasing for that, I'm concerned about how that's gonna play out parking space-wise, taking up parking throughout the day that we need for other purposes, and particularly if it's housing, how that's gonna play out. And particularly if it's housing, how that's going to play out. So, I wouldn't lean toward housing as an option there. Relocation, I think we need to be very careful given the current climate that's occurring in our community regarding the historical value of the downtown core to do anything that would change that. I think we'd be making a mistake if we did. Option five, it sounds like that's not of value to us if we're keeping the property, if I heard that correctly. So, I kind of land where I've been hearing most of these conversations so far seeming to land, which is option, and I agree with the mayor and council president that option seven is probably not a good idea at this time. So, I tend to land in option six as well. I agree with our council president. I'd love to see some more information of what we're giving up, what the value of that property is, et cetera. I would absolutely agree with that, needing to have that information to make a decision. But that's kind of where I lean right now. I'd like to keep the historic, excuse me, value of the building and not give up the land.
Any additional thoughts from counselors? Counselor Payne and then council president?
I would be leaning toward option six to get the, whatever city services could go in there, smaller programs could go in there so we could retain the assets. I don't really have concerns as much about the, I understand that it's one continuous lot with that sort of drive-through area in the back that maybe, may feel like the barrier in negotiating. But in option two and three, I feel like that can be managed in any lease agreement for that access to be maintained. And then whoever, you know, is using that space could use the two spaces behind or, of course, the community parking there. I don't have an opinion terribly strong one way or the other about the housing option. Option three, I would be interested, like Counselor Peralta, in kind of seeing, exploring that potential with our partners and seeing if there's a possibility with meeting a need and then possibly profit. I guess I'm more strongly leaning toward option two for the reason that the less fee could build out that space without the city having to do anything and that it could be a triple net lease and that organization's responsible for the maintenance of the building provided that it complies with historical requirements.
Thank you. Council President?
Yes, if we were to pursue option six and we use that hypothetical $120,000 number, is that money that could only come from the general fund or could you tap other sources of revenue in the city depending on what department went in there or ARPA dollars?
I think depending on the work group, it might open up some other options for financing.
Okay, thank you.
I would, on the relocate the historic house to another property, it kind of implies that that would be the work of the city or was that intended more as sell the house for reallocation or relocation, sorry?
The idea would be to sell the house for relocation, but that, what the house would sell for could be a very small dollar amount with the idea that the cost would be in relocating it.
Okay, so Counselor Peralta?
Yeah, I guess where I'm landing after kind of hearing the conversation a little more is towards three or two. Any solution that causes the redevelopment costs to be borne by someone other than the city, I think is positive. That's the only, those are the only versions that I think lead to that possibility. I disagree, Chris, with your comments about parking. I don't understand why city services would have a different parking imprint, footprint than, you know, especially housing. I'd be interested in if there's planning data on that type of thing. But in general, I think that that's a need. Housing is a need in our community. If we can provide it without having to bear the cost of redeveloping that property, I think that's fine thing.
So, what I generally hear is we narrowed this list down to about three different drivers is the consensus that I hear. We have interest in bringing back information on leasing the building and land in the private market, interest in information on lease the house for needed housing with nonprofit, interest in smaller programs at City Hall move to this property. Did I not capture the sentiment of the council or does anybody feel so their thoughts have been excluded from this group think exercise?
Mayor, that's what I heard too. The other caveat is just understanding the value of the property in the context of any of these options. So, there'd be sort of that one piece of the, you know, the assessment of the value there and that that would be a component of considering any of the options.
Yeah, I think there were a few other question, or a few other data point call-outs that came along with that conversation.
And some of the issues that we would have to explore for any of those three options are similar or the same. So, it's not three discreetly different projects necessarily because some of the information's going to transfer across all three of those options.
And the ongoing maintenance costs of the property currently, I think?
Yep, that was one of the call-outs.
Yeah, we got that.
Yep. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. I adjourn the work session at 6:33 PM. Thank you.
All right, we're going to see another day. Yeah. 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 Uh, I just, I just think that's, uh, yeah. Yep. All from there? So, I just think, um, they're, uh, they're, uh, a lot of people that told me they were gonna make their children do that. Get ahead of it next year, get in my classroom. Yeah. 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 Everybody's talking about it. So, is, is, uh, Alvin, uh, on this part, or is it? Yeah. 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 Yeah, I was gonna say, that's, you know, that's, maybe, uh, that's, uh, uh, yeah.
All right, we're gonna start in one minute, folks. Do not pass go. Do not collect $200. Just 100. All right, good evening and welcome to the McMinnville City Council Regular Meeting of March 28, 2023. Are we recording? Okay, great. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our city recorder Claudius Sisneros to do a roll call.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Counselor Minkie.
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Counsel President Carvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drabkin.
Here, thank you. And I've asked Counselor Chris Chenoweth to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a few proclamations this evening, and then we'll be taking public comment after that, and then hearing advice and information from councilors and executive team, and then we have a consent agenda. We'll start this evening with our proclamation on designation of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse is one of our nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders, and whereas it is estimated that one in four children will suffer significant abuse before the age of 18. And in federal fiscal year 2021, over 160,000 contacts were made to the Oregon Child Abuse Hotline. A total of 42,876 received reports were assigned for CPS assessment. Of all completed child protective services assessments, 7,352 were founded for abuse and involved 10,766 victims. And whereas the physical, emotional, mental, and fiscal impact of abuse falls on children of all ages and abilities who come from all economic, racial, and social backgrounds, and these crimes affect many more family members, friends, neighbors, and community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention efforts succeed because of partnerships created among state and local government agencies, schools, faith communities, civic and community organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, while recognizing that feeling connected to community can be a protective factor against child abuse. And whereas the City of McMinnville, Oregon is dedicated to stopping child abuse and supporting survivors and their families while working to prevent it. And whereas each of us has a role to play in stopping the problem of child abuse as part of the solution by learning how to prevent, recognize, and report child abuse and supporting prevention, education, and empowerment programs for children and youth. Now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We reaffirm McMinnville, Oregon's commitment to creating a safer, healthier, more thriving community for our children and taking steps to help prevent child abuse through awareness efforts, prevention promotion, and training on responding responsibly. We encourage all citizens to wear blue each Friday in April as a public statement in McMinnville in support of child abuse prevention. We encourage community members to join in awareness rallies on April 22 throughout Yamhill County. Further, we call upon all citizens to invest in the lives of children by learning what they can do to help stop child abuse through Juliet's House, a community resource, or by visiting julietshouse.org. I have here on to set my hand this 20th day of March in the year 2023. We also have a proclamation this evening for Parkinson's, supporting the designation of April 2023 as Parkinson's Awareness Month. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States, and whereas the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's Research is dedicated to finding a cure for Parkinson's disease through an aggressively funded research agenda and to ensuring the development of improved therapies for those living with Parkinson's today. And whereas there is adequate data on the incidences and prevalence of Parkinson's disease, but it is estimated to affect nearly 1 million people in the United States, including more than 20,000 people in Oregon, and that number is expected to more than double by 2040. And whereas it is estimated that 90,000 individuals of all ages are diagnosed annually with Parkinson's disease in North America, 50% higher than the 60,000 annual diagnoses that research previously suggested. And whereas it is estimated that Parkinson's costs $52 billion per year, of which the federal government shoulders $29 billion, leaving American families to cover the remaining $29 billion. And whereas it is estimated that more than 1.6 million people in the United States will be impacted by Parkinson's disease by 2037 at an estimated economic burden of $80 billion. And whereas there is no known cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease, and available treatments are limited in their ability to address patients' medical needs and remain effective over time. And whereas the City of McMinnville recognizes the efforts of the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's Research as it leverages its core values of optimism, urgency, resourcefulness, collaboration, accountability, and persistence in problem-solving work, in problem-solving to work on behalf of the 6 million people of all ages worldwide living with Parkinson's. And whereas increased research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Parkinson's Awareness Month. And in witness thereof, I have here on to set my hand this 20th day of March in the year 2023. We'll now take comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak and you're on Zoom, please use the raise your hand function to request, and once your turn is up, we'll announce your name and unmute your mic, or you may send a chat directly to our city recorder Claudius Sisneros, and we will announce you. Do we have anyone signed up for a public comment?
No one has signed up, but I do want to state for the record, Kim Morris submitted a letter to council that was emailed today, and it will be me part of the record on the amended packet.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the gallery that would like to provide a public comment this evening? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public comment this evening? Is there anyone on the phone that would like to provide public comment this evening? Not hearing any. We will move on to the next part of the agenda. We are moving into the consent agenda, and I have had a request to pull item resolution number 2023 dash... I've had a request to pull resolution number 2023-14. So we'll pull that from the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to... Does any other council request to have any other item removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so move, Madam Mayor.
I have a motion from Counselor Minkie.
Second.
And a second from Counselor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. The motion passes unanimously, and we will now consider resolution number 2023-14, a resolution amendment to the City of McMinnville ARPA Project Navigation Center. And I'd like to start by turning this over to our Community Development Director Heather Richards, as you have in front of you today, a slightly revised resolution from what was originally in your packet. If you could give us some background, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilors. So in front of you is a resolution to amend the ARPA project that you funded for the navigation center. You allocated $500,000 to that project on November 9, 2021 with resolution number 2021-54. With the resolution in 2021, the project was written in such a way that it specified that the $500,000 would be used for operations. Since that time, we've been working through the construction of the project, and with the rising costs in construction and the complexity of the land, our project, construction project budget has gone up, and we've been in the process of raising funds for that, which we have done successfully with everyone's effort. But with this $500,000, what we're recommending is that the city council reallocate it as 500,000 of ARPA funds dedicated to the operations and/or construction of the navigation center. And what that does is it allows some flexibility for those funds to be used for construction if needed, and then if not needed for construction to move into operations.
Thank you very much. And then I also just want to say before we go into questions on this, that when we go back to do advice and information items, that's when I was planning on doing this, but I'll say right now that I am going to ask you to come back with a project update at our next work session. There have been a lot of moving pieces over the last couple of weeks, I think, as everybody's aware that there have been moving pieces. But I think it's, we need to get all those puzzle pieces on the table. I will say that we went from having kind of no available options to options and good partnership coming forward. And so as this process moves forward, I think as we work to solidify things, we want to make sure everybody is aware of all of those pieces. So with that, Counselor Chenoweth, you have questions?
I do, and I may be jumping the gun on what you're gonna present, but before I agree to changing the way in which we're funding, I'd kind of like to get a few of these out of the way. What is the total anticipated construction cost for this project at this point?
So final maximum cost will come from facular construction on, I believe, April 14. And I should defer to staff to answer these questions, but thank you for directing them to me, and now I will look, I will do my best to not answer them myself. I'll ask our Community Development Director to answer that question. Thank you.
Yes, so it's about $2.8 million in terms of the estimated cost. That's an estimated cost based on schematic design documents. And so as you remember, we went into an alternative procurement process for a contractor to do as a construction manager, general contractor, so that as we were working through this process, we could be value engineering at the same time as we go through the different steps of design. And so that's based on the value engineering from schematic design. The contractor is due to bring his guaranteed maximum price to us on April 10. We will then be looking at that and evaluating it, and we are scheduled to bring to you, City Council, a contract for the construction of this project on May 11. Now with that said, what you will see is the guaranteed maximum price isn't the total project budget, because that only includes what is the construction cost themselves. We will still be working through permitting costs when we submit it for the construction, for the building permits. And there could be, after going through that process of building permit review, some frontage improvements required as well. And then also there are two old structures that we're dealing with in terms of rehab, and so there could be some discoveries there, too. So we have built contingencies into the budget to accommodate that.
So is the intent to remodel the two existing structures or to raise them and rebuild from scratch?
Great question. So the intent is to remodel the two existing structures and then to build new construction between them that connects them, and then that will provide more room for more beds in that facility, as well as the onsite services.
Okay. It just, $3 million is an awful lot of money. I'm rounding up to make it simple for my speaking, but $3 million seems like an awful lot of money to remodel two existing structures to 36 beds. And so I'm trying to grasp how we got there.
Well, so I'll say two things in response to that, and we'll bring that back in terms of our project update for you, because I don't have all the data with me. I don't want to speak about this. But I will tell you, the cost per square foot's gonna be higher on a project like this, because this is trauma-informed design, so it's a very different design approach. And then the durability of the construction is also a consideration, too. With that said, what we do know, because we just recently went through some research through this process, there were seven cities that received navigation center funds. McMinnville received $1.5 million, which was the lowest amount. Roseburg also received $1.5 million. And then the other cities all received more. In terms of the number of beds being provided, this facility will provide 35 or 36 beds as we're working through this process, and it would be the lowest-cost facility of those seven facilities. So right now, the lowest-cost facility that's been done is $3.25 million for less beds.
Fair enough. So last I heard, I thought we had a $1.3 million funding gap. Now we're talking about a $500,000 potential transition. Where did the other $800,000 come from to cover that gap?
Well, our mayor's been very active, so thank you, Mayor, for that. We've been working with partners and also our state representatives, including the governor's office, who helped us reach out to resources. And so the gap funding is coming from the CCO, the Yamhill County CCO, based on a conversation that they had with the governor's office on how they can reposition some funds.
And that's not been before, that's going to their board for consideration.
Yes, yes. And then this $500,000 is also part of that gap funding right now. So what we wanted to do was, because...
Can I get you to pause for just a second and tell me what CCO stands for, for those that are listening?
Yamhill Community Connect Care.
Organization.
Thank you. Continue, sorry.
Sorry, I work in acronyms, and sometimes I don't know what they stand for. I know what they do as an organization. But anyways, so the interest in getting this project built and serving our community as quickly as we can. So to stay on schedule, we want to be able to bring to you that construction contract on May 11 so that we can break ground at the end of June or July and construct over the summer season. And so to be able to do so, we're not comfortable with staff bringing you a contract to sign unless we know that the funds are secured. So one of the things we wanted to do with these $500,000 that were in ARPA funds was create the flexibility where they could be used for operations or construction, so that they could be part of that $1.3 million funding gap and sort of offset it. But if we're able to get other funds to the table before May 11, then these funds could shift into future operations.
Which takes me to what I think is my final question. When initially we voted on this, I voiced skepticism at the time that building a project in which we have to start out by providing the operating funds is not a good way to start a project. I mean, operating funds should be part of the process at the very get-go on their own funding streams. And if they don't have that, we're gonna be looking at a problem two, three, four years down the road. So the council agreed over that objection to give two years' worth of operating costs, essentially. Now, we're discussing potentially pulling that two years of operating costs. Where are they gonna get the funding to, or do they have something in place for the funding for those operating costs going forward if we pull them?
So that's a great question. And the $500,000 is a one-year operating cost. They were also going to Newburgh, who also dedicated funds to the operations. So that's a great question. There is a letter in the packet from YCAP, who is the operator of the facility and also owns the property where this facility will be, and they'll own the project in the end. In the last two years, there's been many more opportunities that have come to bear in terms of funding operations for these types of facilities, and so those funds have started to become available that were not available two years ago. YCAP is the one that came to us when we were talking to them about the ARPA funds and said, you know, we know that this project's gonna be more than what we received from the state. We want to be able to support it with ARPA funds. What's the best way to expend this? And they wanted to protect those $500,000 for operation funds, because at that time, there wasn't a sort of, it didn't look like there was a lot of opportunity to acquire those operation funds. That landscape has changed considerably in terms of funds being available for operations, and so now they're the ones saying, let's make these funds more flexible in case we need them for the construction piece of it, but keep it also as operations as well. That's the amendment before you tonight, is rather than just lock it into construction, say operations and/or construction, so it could be flexible funds used for this project. But they're much more comfortable that there are funding resources available for operations and not as much available for construction. And so that's the sort of change in the landscape there. But those types of questions are things that I can work with them. We'll all reach out to YCAP. We'll do a joint presentation on the project from the city side and from the YCAP side, and I'll let them know that those are questions of interest, and we'll bring back the details for you on that.
I would love to extend an invitation to YCAP to be here, especially for YCAP-specific questions and questions specific to their funding sources, so that we make sure that we've got everything on the table and we're not answering questions on behalf of other people.
But they are partnering this request to you tonight, and that's why the letter from them is in the packet. They felt it was important for them to express their position and their support for this change.
Thank you very much for answering my questions.
Thank you very much. If there are not any other questions, I...
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead. Counselor Peralta.
Thanks, Heather. You mentioned a term that I'm not familiar with in terms of the construction type. You said that the facility is gonna be built with a trauma-informed design. What exactly does that mean?
So I would prefer to bring back a good answer for you with the presentation that we provide to you, but it is a really special type of design from two perspectives, and this is just me as an observer participating in the process. It's the choice of what the design looks like, so the environment, but it's also the choice of the materials associated with that. But I'll put that down as my list for things to bring back to you as part of our update, so we get a more concise response to that.
Is it partially accurate to say it's like a more durable kind of construction?
Yeah, that's part of it, but I don't want that to be the only focus of it. It's much more than that. And actually, going through that, observing that design process and discussion, that was, to me, that was a great part of this project, watching that unfold, because it's very thoughtful and intentional in terms of the choices made and how they impact the people who will be living and interacting in that facility.
Right. And so that's kind of what I'd like to get at. So help me to understand and help the community to understand. We've had testimony on this, obviously, but what kind of niche is this navigation center gonna play in the community that we don't currently have filled today?
So two niches. So this will be a low-barrier emergency shelter with 36 beds. That's more beds to our inventory. And when I started here six years ago, we had about 17 or 18 permanent beds, but we've been adding beds every year. But that's 36 additional beds in a low-barrier emergency shelter provision. And then the other big piece of it, it's onsite services. So rather than, for people to reach stability, shelter is very critical, and then once they get shelter, there's other things that they need to address in terms of services. And sending them out to go find those services in a disparate, you know, disparately around town, that's a difficult transition and path, right? So bringing those services to the people who need them onsite so they can access them will provide so much more wraparound insecurity and stability, so that people can raise themselves out of homelessness and get housing stability.
Thank you. Now, let's think about a category of folks who are very treatment-resistant. We see people around town who have mental health issues that are unresolved, and I've seen some of the same people on the streets here for years, in declining mental and physical health. We've had people die on the streets over a period of years. Are some of the people that, I mean, you can't look into my mind here, but are some of the people that I'm expressing concerns about that maybe all of us have seen, are those people candidates for this type of shelter, or is there an additional layer of service that we need to be able to provide that this won't accomplish?
I'd rather have the program providers be able to answer that question for you. I'm not a program provider, so I'll write that down, Counselor, and visit with YCAP, that that's a question to bring back to you as part of our presentation. And then if they're not the provider, maybe they can bring a partner with them to answer that.
Thank you. If I can just make one last comment, Mayor?
Sure.
I just want to say, Heather, and to our staff that's worked on this, as well as the providers, I'm really grateful for the work that you've done to move this project forward, grateful for the funding that we got initially from the state to address this. This has been the most frustrating issue for me, our inability as a city to address homelessness, and the fact that we have one of six crisis navigation centers funded through this program, I think is tremendous. I think it's a tremendous asset for our region, and I'm really grateful to you, Mayor, for the work that you did to close... ...close this gap in a very short period of time without relying on specific additional state funding. I mean, we're getting additional funding in here, but it's not relying on a legislative solution, which means that we can actually hit the construction times, which wouldn't have been a possibility if this had been a legislative solution. So, I think the community owes you a tremendous debt for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't thank me yet. Let's, let's get this built. But I appreciate the sentiment. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-14.
So moved.
I have a motion from Counselor Menke and a second from Counselor Payne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the resolution passes unanimously. And we will now go to Advice and Information Items. I'd like to start with Counselor Menke.
I really have only one thing I wanted to point out. Basically, everybody here at the diocese, I think, has one of these. Or if they don't, they picked it up at the stakeholder meeting today. It details out what youth outreach services mean. It talks about the drop-in center, which will be open as of May 1st. And there is, I think, April 6th is the day that you can go and actually preview it as a, there'll be an open house. I think it's from 6 to, 5 to 7, or 6 to 8, or something like that. They, along with the drop-in center, they have sponsors, they actually do safe shelter for kids age 11 to 17 who are at risk or currently are kicked out. They can be placed with a family. And then, there's a transitional living program for kids age 16 to 24. So, they do a lot, and YCAP does a lot in these services. So, I just wanted to point that out to everyone.
Thank you so much. And Counselor Payne?
The Landscape Review Committee met about two weeks ago. They approved two street tree removals and three landscape plans.
Thank you, Counselor Peralta.
Thank you. Council of Governments had its quarterly meeting, but unfortunately, I was not able to attend, so I will submit my report in writing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Chenoweth?
Parkway Committee met. And, of course, we're getting closer to starting 2A work, which is going to be the interchange at 219 Wilsonville Road area. And then, they're looking to secure the funding for 2B, which will be the pass from the top of Rex Hill down to that interchange. So, that's the, most of the discussion revolved around that. The MEVLC met. We decided that we were interested in looking at Michael Mulkey, who is the CEO of the hospital, to join our team, which you guys voted on as part of the consent agenda. And now, he is a member of the MEVLC. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Gary?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. Airport Commission hasn't met, but tonight in the consent agenda, we did adopt the minimum standards, which started way back when Mike Biset was at the helm. So, it's a long time coming, but we got that over the finish line. And that had a lot of engagement from airport users and potential developers out there. And it was just a big process to move through, but it was nice to see so many different people connected to the airport, engaged in that process. So, thank you for adopting that tonight. YCOM has not met since our last meeting. And Visit McMinnville has not met since our last meeting. And Fire District, last Monday, the 20th, was voter pamphlet cutoff, so got our City Council statement of support submitted for that. So, thank you again for, all you guys for signing on to that. I think unanimous support is a huge effort in that, along with 10 other statements of support between Major 226, a rule dissolution, and 227, the formation of the new district. Still going out and speaking to various groups, kind of now connecting for that second tour around nonprofits and service clubs, letting them know the plan for the $1.50 that we landed on at the end of January. And also digging through my email inbox and my voicemails, reaching out to constituents that have reached out over that really busy week of getting endorsements for those voters' pamphlet statements. So, if you hear anybody with questions, be sure to forward me their contact info, and I'll move them to the top of the list and get up, call out to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In addition to the invitation for a project update and upcoming work session, you'll have some correspondence coming from Claudia about one-on-ones with BDS. This is the strategic planning firm that McMinnville Water and Light and the city of McMinnville have co-enlisted to help us with some essential, essentially, future planning, get our, to help get our bodies working back together here. And so, I have three counselors that have replied to that request for one-on-one. If the other three could also get those confirmed, it would be greatly appreciated. While we're talking about water and light, I just wanted to thank the Water and Light Commissioners for changing the meeting time for their upcoming meetings, so that we could schedule our public hearing for the Gwendolyn Hotel starting on that Tuesday night. I appreciate that. And I think, as you all know, we have two nights now noticed for that public hearing. And then, the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission met this week, or last week. And there will be a recommendation coming to you on how to use construction excise tax funds as they come into the city. And there was discussion around funding, taking a portion of that to fund the administrative portion of administering those fees. So, being able to have somebody to actually do the work to get that money out to where it needed to go. And you'll see that reflected, not only in the recommendation that comes to you, but I believe that'll also then be reflected in the budget that'll be coming to you this May. We're going to have a busy May. We're going to have a busy May. I'm just going to say that. And then, lastly, I wanted to just also thank Officer Height for the work he's been doing. And I know you've received updates from the Chief of Police about city's response generally to things happening in the city, but also specifically in parks. And if you're reading those updates, you know that in addition to enforcement, Officer Height also took the extra step of writing a personal letter and going out and talking with people about vacating Joe Dancer Park on Saturday, when games are in session, so that the intended use of that park can be used for parking families coming to participate in Parks and Rec programming. So, I appreciate that the issue is being approached from all sides. And that is the end of my update. Let's do Department Heads. How about we start with our City Manager, Jeff Towery?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple of items to report. We're nearing the end of our administrative work preparing the budget for 2324. We have fives of days left, probably, before, as Jennifer likes to say, the music stops. We expect to have the electronic budget in your hands and the Budget Committee's hands roughly three weeks before the Budget Committee meeting, and the printed version out shortly after that. Lots of folks have welcomed me back, and I am glad to be back. And I'm leaving tomorrow. My phone just buzzed. I can check in for my flight to Fairbanks, Alaska. I'll be attending the Northwest Regional City Managers Conference. I'll be gone for about 53 hours, so I'll be back on Friday evening.
Thank you. Interim City Attorney, Walt Gowell.
No report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Library Director, Jenny Berg.
Thank you, Mayor and counselors. There's a lot going on at the library right now. I want to thank the Friends of the Library for their funding of some smaller construction projects happening in the back room for staff. And the Library Foundation for funding the redo of the plaza, which I talked about a couple of weeks ago. And it is already looking so much better. The surface of the, the surface that was peeling off has now been removed. Pavers look fantastic, and then we'll put more surfacing on that hopefully will stick better. And we also, at the same time, have, it's spring break, so we had family board games today. Tomorrow, we have two storytimes. Thursday and Friday, we have kiddo playtime and then Legos as well. And we're also in the Carnegie Room. We've been, and I can't believe, this has been such a calm season for taxes. We usually host the AARP tax preparer volunteers at the library, and it often is a lot of work for staff and a bit chaotic. And this year, it has been amazingly smooth sailing, and that's been wonderful to see. And of course, we all know there's just a couple of weeks left for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Community Development Director, Heather Richards.
Yes, thank you. So, Jenny gets to play with Legos, and I get to send letters about hazards. So, we're in our natural hazards planning. We did send out 3,500 letters to impacted property owners. And we've been hosting public information sessions over the last two weeks. I've seen some of you on that, to just walk through what the program is, what the data looks like, how it could impact people's properties. And we're also having daily, all day, staff is answering phone calls and emails as well. So, we're doing our best to answer people's questions. And the first public hearing for that will be April 6th, so next week, with Planning Commission. We've talked with Planning Commission, and our goal is to take the time we need to take to get through this and hear the public testimony and concerns and make sure that the program we're doing is compliant with the state regulations and the mandates from the state, and also that we're developing a safe program for our residents in McMinnville, but we're doing it in such a way that it serves McMinnville. So, we'll take the time we need, and that will come to you eventually as City Council. Also, wanted to share with you that we did hear, we haven't received it yet, that there is an intention to appeal the Gwendolyn Hotel decision by the Planning Commission. And so, we have started the preliminary noticing for that. The reason why, we asked if someone was going to appeal to let us know early on. The appeal period ends on 5 o'clock on April 3rd, so next Monday. But we have a deadline in which to issue a decision, a final decision, which is May 9th. And we want you, the City Council, if there was an appeal, to have the time to work through the public hearing and hear the public testimony and have time for your deliberations and time for staff to write the appropriate findings. So, we are noticing a public hearing that will start on April, I keep saying August. I keep hoping, right? But April 18th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and then April 19th, if additional time is needed, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. And then, we also have some time scheduled in your April 25th and your May 9th meetings as well as needed.
Thank you very much.
I had a question about the hearing. What are the rules around the hearing? If they, if somebody requests an appeal, then the council automatically hears the appeal? Is that, is that an automatic process?
Yeah. So, and it's gone up the three tiers. So, if somebody applies, if somebody submits an appeal of a decision of the Historic Landmarks Committee, it is automatically heard by the Planning Commission. And then, if somebody appeals the Planning Commission decision, it is automatically heard by the City Council.
And then, is our process appealable to, like, DLCD or somebody?
Your decision is appealable to LUBA.
To LUBA, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, lastly, I just wanted to say we have a vacancy on our Planning Commission in Ward 1. We're going to start the advertising for that here this week. So, those who are interested, please contact me or staff or go on our website. You can find the application there. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Finance Director, Jennifer Cuellar.
Yeah, this evening, just one thing this evening. I wanted to let you guys know that there is a, there's a new component of the opioid settlement.
Can you talk more into your microphone?
Apologies.
Thank you.
There's a new component of the national opioids settlement. What would you call it? Court cases, that kind of thing. And so, we've signed on to the newest iteration of that, which will deal with TIVA, Alergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. So, just wanting to let folks know that we're in on that as well.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Anne Pagano.
Ma'am, here, Dobkin. I'm excited to announce the launch of the city's Adopt a Road program. Very excited about it.
Will you also, into your mic and maybe repeat the exciting news, so everyone at home knows, too?
We are launching the city's Adopt a Road program, and I'm very excited about it. If there are any businesses, schools, organizations, or community members that are interested in making a difference in our community, please contact the Adopt a Road Program Manager, Sean Garrison, at 503-434-7316. And you can also find information about the program on our website under Public Works and the Operations tab. And sponsors will get a sign installed with their name on it, which is free advertising. And I'd like to say thank you to Dale Marshall, our Streets Maintenance Supervisor, for his hard work putting this program together. So, thank you.
Can you repeat the name and number one more time for those?
Sean Garrison, 503-434-7316.
Thank you. City Recorder, Claudia Sisneros.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. And our HR Director, Vicki Hedges.
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you. And has everybody had an opportunity to review the November 22 and December 22 Cash and Investment Report that was in your packet? And are there any questions? Okay. They will now adjourn the City Council meeting at 7:43 p.m.